Good evening, I would like to call the May eighteenth, twenty twenty-one Planning Commission Meeting to order. I would like to point out that this meeting is being hosted through livestream on the city's website and by teleconference for public comment. Due to the structure of this meeting, I would like to remind the Planning Commission to have their microphones turned on and positioned so the audience can hear. Dr. King, let me have a roll call, please.
Sure. Commissioner Hill is absent. Commissioner Luntke?
Yes.
Commissioner Dean Struffer?
Here.
Chair Van Arsdale is absent. Chair Wood?
Here.
Thank you. Item three, indication and plaques, Commissioner Dean Struffer.
... to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in the world.
Hello, thank you for bringing us here this evening and just guide us as we make our decisions for the city. And we thank you for keeping us in good health and we pray for a good future for our city. Amen.
I'm taking this off when I talk. This is... All right, agenda item number four, approval of the minutes, any comments? Changes? Entertainer motion for approval?
I move that we approve the minutes of the Planning Commission meeting of May fourth, twenty twenty-one.
A second.
Oh, sorry, that was me.
Item three zero. Item number five, public comment period. To accommodate public comment, we've made some temporary changes to this part of the agenda that were necessitated to comply with COVID-nineteen directives. There is a temporary two-minute per person time limit for all general public comments on non-public hearing items. All who wish to speak, including commissioners and staff, need to be recognized by the chair before speaking. Members of the public shall comply with the adopted rules of decorum, Resolution four-five-four-five, a copy of which will be requested through the city clerk's office. You may fill out a form and submit your comments online at www.hemetca.gov/councilchamberlive. Submittals must be done before two PPM the day of the meeting. For those that wish to join by teleconference, you may join by calling eight-eight-eight-five-eight-five-nine-zero-zero-eight and when prompted dial seven-four-three-dash-four-six-three-dash-six-zero-four-pound. You will be asked for your name prior to speaking. Reminder, if you are joined by teleconference, please mute your phone to prevent noise interference until you are given time to provide public comment. Also, when speaking, please make sure to mute your livestream. Please state your name and item you are commenting on before speaking. Are there any members of the public participating through teleconference that would like to comment on any item that's not on the agenda?
There are no members of the public online.
Any ecomments?
We did not receive any ecomments.
Item six A for conditional use permit twenty dash zero-zero-six and public convenience or necessity or necessity twenty-one dash zero-zero-one for El Toro Express.
Good evening. I will be presenting conditional use permit twenty dash zero-zero-six and PCN twenty-one dash zero-zero-one for El Toro Express. The owner of the property, R.A. and B Development, the location nineteen fifty-eight West Florida Avenue, and this is for the operation of a five thousand forty square foot market with alcohol sales, type twenty-one off sale, and a determination that a public convenience or necessity will be served. Here we can see the general plan land use designation, a red being community commercial. Zoning is C-two, general commercial. And here is an aerial view of this site. Of course, this is already built out. This is an over Google view. A conditional use permit and a public convenience or necessity are required with the project. Markets are permitted by right in the C-two zone, but alcohol sales and the off-sale type twenty-one requires CUP approval by the Planning Commission. A public convenience or necessity determination is required by ABC because of the over-concentration of ABC licenses in the census tract. Overconcentration, I'm going to define that per ABC, Census Tract four-three-four-point-zero-five is approved by ABC or authorized to have two off-sale licenses before it's deemed over-concentrated. Currently, there are five off-sale licenses in the census tract, so ABC requires a determination if issuing another ABC license will serve a public convenience or necessity. ABC records indicate that the Hemet Police Department has been designated for PCN determinations. The Hemet Police Department made a determination that a PCN would not be served by approving another ABC license. The number of licenses allowed in census tract is two, and they're all already five. These are the reasons Hemet PD denied the public convenience and necessity. And in addition, another type twenty-one ABC license would lead to increase in quality of live calls for service. PD gave planning staff records dating back from January first, two thousand eighteen, to February seventeen, twenty twenty-one, and these were the calls that were made during that time. And calls were made to Gas Mart, who has a type twenty, twenty-two calls. Chips Liquor, they have a type twenty-one, forty-six calls. Alliance Market and Liquor, type twenty-one, one hundred and thirty-six calls. Shell Gas Station has a type twenty, three hundred and fifty-seven calls. Walgreens has a type twenty-one, and that's five hundred ninety-nine calls. Five hundred. And in addition to the locations that have a type off-sale license, there were also calls made to just the nineteen hundred block of West Florida, which is in the census tract, and that was two hundred and fifty-two calls. So there was over fourteen hundred calls in that time in that census tract. The types of calls that the report breaks down are listed here. The code, I give my best to with the descriptions. Four-eight-eight is petty theft, and there were thirty-eight. Four-fifteen is a disturbance, there were two hundred and ten. A three-fourteen is indecent exposure, there were sixteen. A six-oh-two is, there was five hundred and fifty incidents of trespassing. A two-forty-two is battery, and there were sixty of those calls. Suspicious circumstances, there were a hundred and thirty-nine. Under the influence, thirty-five. Shoplifting, a hundred and fifty-seven. Robbery, twenty-six. Brandishing a weapon, three. Incident involving a transient, ninety-nine. DUI, twenty-two. Vandalism, seventeen. Drug sales, twenty-two. Assault, five. Tagging, five. Drug paraphernalia, one. And defrauding an innkeeper, seven. This is a map to show what Census Tract four-three-four-point-zero-five looks like and its boundaries. This is Palm, Acacia, Lion, Florida, Kirby, Devonshire, Lion, and Nellow. And of course, the commercial is in this area here. And the colors denote the location of the retail outlet. So the Gas Mart is here, Chips Liquor is here, Lion's Market is here, the gas station, Shell Gas Station is here, Walgreens is here, the proposed El Toro Express is here, the nineteen hundred block is in red here, and this shows another off-license outside of the tract, but just near its boundaries, and this is the Walmart Neighborhood Market, and this is Ralphs. So this shows that within one mile between Palm and Kirby, there are seven off-sale outlets. And there are many findings. The first section had to do with findings for CUP, and the finding read, or the, you know, the finding was that the proposed location of the conditional use is in accord with the objectives of this census, of this chapter, and the purpose of the zone in which the site is located. So Census Tract three, four-three-four-point-zero-five is experiencing overconcentration of ABC licenses. Hemet Police found that an additional ABC license will not provide a public convenience or necessity, that approval of the CUP would increase the quality of call, quality of live calls. It did not meet the hundred-foot separation from residential, it's sixty-six feet away. So this finding cannot be made. Finding two, that the proposed, the proposed location of the conditional use and the conditions under which it will be operated or maintained will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare, or materially injurious to properties or improvements in the vicinity. Census Tract, again, is over, there's overconcentration. There was over fourteen hundred calls to that census tract, including petty theft, disturbance, indecent exposure, trespassing, battery, suspicious circumstances, under the influence, shoplifting, robbery, brandishing a weapon, incidents involving transient persons, DUIs, vandalism, drug sales, assault, tagging, drug paraphernalia, and defrauding an innkeeper. So this finding cannot be made. That the use and operation is consistent with the general plan elements, goals, and policies. Approval of the request would be inconsistent with the general plan, the following general plan policies. Land use goal, three-point-nine, says to prohibit uses that lead to the deterioration of residential neighborhoods. Land use six-point-seven says appropriately control the location, concentration, and number of community-sensitive uses such as alcohol sales, tobacco products, adult businesses, medical marijuana, and medical marijuana dispensaries. Land use fifteen-point-zero-five says create, update, and enforce regulations and laws pertaining to the location, retailing, and use of unhealthy substances such as tobacco, marijuana, and other drugs and alcohol. This finding cannot be made. Finding four, that the type, intensity, sensitivity, and operating characteristics of the proposed use and the manner in which it'll be located on the site are compatible with the existing land uses and character of established neighborhoods or planned development in the community. Operating seven AM to midnight is not consistent with the surrounding business hours. There is an overconcentration of ABC licenses. A PCN cannot be made. Rocks Ordinance eighteen fifty-eight states that nuisance and criminal activities increase at and around onsite and offsite alcohol sites, so this finding cannot be made. These are the findings for alcohol sales, and they're just being summarized here for the complete explanation. They are further explained in the staff report, but the condition, the use complies with all the following separation requirements. Note, with notwithstanding the foregoing, the decision-making body may issue a conditional use permit to a use that does not comply with one or more of the following separation standards if it finds that unique circumstances exist that justify noncompliance with the separation standard. So the first one wanted, the use is located at least six hundred feet as measured from property line to property line to any existing public or private schools, parks, or places of worship. This finding can be made because Sylvan is thirteen hundred feet, Gibble Park is over sixteen hundred, and Iglesia Aventista is over six hundred feet. So the distance requirements can be met on this one. The use is located at least a hundred feet as measured from property line to property line from existing residential uses or land that is zoned for residential uses. Sunburst Mobile Home Park is sixty feet, sixty-six feet away, so this finding cannot be made. The use is located at least a thousand feet from existing pearly probationer homes, emergency shelters, supportive housing, or transitional housing. There are no such uses within a thousand feet, so this finding can be made. The use is fully visible from a public street with an unobstructed view from the public street for public safety. The building is set down on Florida Avenue approximately three hundred and eighty feet. There is a building within the center directly in front of the market, so the use cannot be fully visible from the public street, so this finding cannot be made. The proposed use will not be detrimental to surrounding properties and neighborhoods, including ensuring that the use does not contribute to loitering, public drunkenness, noise, obstructing, obstructing pedestrian and vehicular traffic, parking, crime, interference with pedestrian corridors used by children, defacement, damage to structures. Quality of life calls are already taxing to the Hemet PD, and per Ordinance eighteen fifty-eight, higher density of onsite and offsite alcohol license leads to greater number of vehicle crashes and pedestrian injury. Violent crime is higher when there are more than a hundred alcohol outlets with a population of more than fifty thousand. That increase is two-point-five percent. In Hemet, there are a hundred and thirty-one alcohol outlets, and the population is eighty-five. So this, this, this finding cannot be made. The proposed use will not adversely impact the suitability of adjacent commercially-zoned properties for commercial uses. Alcohol sales at late hours has the potential to attract homeless to the market, resulting in increased service calls and undue drain in police services to the area. The potential added calls may limit the service that is currently available to adjacent and nearby commercial businesses and uses. This finding cannot be made. Summary of findings for the public convenience and necessity determination. The first one, that a public convenience would be served by the establishment of the proposed use. A public convenience would not be served as there are already five retail locations within the census tract, and there are seven within one mile on Florida Avenue from Palm to Kirby. That the proposed use is not anticipated to be a source of nuisance behavior associated with excessive consumption of alcohol beverages or the exposure of alcohol beverages to minors. Hemet PD has indicated that another ABC license can lead to increase in quality of life calls. Ninety-nine code six forty-seven calls, incidents involving transients, transients. Of those ninety-nine calls, sixty involve public intoxication. The proposed use will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare. Per Ordinance eighteen fifty-eight, two-point-five increase in violence, in crime per year when there are more than a hundred alcohol outlets and more than fifty thousand population. Hemet has a hundred and thirty-one outlets and eighty-five population. Criminal activities such as drug dealing, public drunkenness, loitering, and other behaviors that negatively impact neighborhoods occur with disproportionate frequency at and around premises of onsite and offsite sales. The proposed use would not increase the severity of existing law enforcement or public nuisance problems in the surrounding areas. The Hemet PD, Hemet Police Department has denied the PCN, stating that the addition of another business with a type twenty-one ABC license will only lead to increase in quality of live calls for service that are already taxing the department. The proposed use is consistent with the objectives, policies, general land uses, and programs of the general plan and any other applicable specific plan, this section and any other applicable zoning regulations contained in this chapter. Approval of the proposed alcohol license would be inconsistent with the general plan policies as follow, and I already reviewed these incompatible uses to regulate sensitive uses and unhelp, and to create, update, and enforce regulations and laws to the location, retailing, and use of unhealthy substances such as tobacco, marijuana, and other drugs and alcohol. On May seventh, twenty twenty-one, the city gave public notice by advertising in the press enterprise, and on May sixth, twenty twenty-one, by mailing to property owners and tenants within a five-hundred-foot radius of a holding of a public hearing at which the project would be considered. No communication has been received either for or against the project. Staff recommendation that the Planning Commission adopt Resolution twenty twenty-one, denying conditional use permit twenty dash zero-zero-six and public convenience or necessity. Excuse me. Determination twenty-one dash zero-zero-one, based on the information and findings in the staff report. This concludes my presentation. Staff is here to answer any questions. Sergeant Douglas is here from Hemet PD, and the applicant is also here to answer any questions.
I have questions for both PD and applicant. So I know that you are against the ABC twenty-one. Would you be opposed to the twenty as well? Is it just like any license, or?
Before you answer, could you come up to the?
Oh, sorry. My bad.
Say your name and address for the record, thank you. And then the question for the applicant will be during public hearing.
All right. As far as the type of license?
I'm sorry, sir, could you state your name and?
Oh, sorry, first one, first time here. Sergeant Josiah Douglas, the Hemet Police Department. As far as the type of license, twenty or twenty-one, it doesn't really, it's not really relevant which type of license it is. The particular area is zoned for, or the tract is zoned for two, and one of the requirements when submitting the license was for the applicant to provide any information as far as why public convenience or necessity would be served by the issuance of this license, they provided no such information. And so with that being said, and with the concentration already being over with the ABC allow, or suggest with the Census District, and coupling with the rise in quality of service calls, that's just not something that we endorse.
Any other questions? So the only question I have is in regards to the process for the PCN itself in the staff report, there was some, some discussion on the difference between the Hemet PD being responsible for doing that versus the Planning Commission. The ABC, if I understood correctly, ABC has already received a denial of the PCN from the Hemet PD. Is it necessary for the Planning Commission to also process that while we figure out who, who's responsible for processing that?
Yes, that is correct. The information that we received from ABC license is that they have a documentation from the city, and, and this was before all of us got here, that they received the documentation stating that the police department will determine the public convenience and necessity portion of ABC license. What you have before you is three different findings, a conditional use permit, alcohol license findings, as well as the PCN findings. So as a commission, you would have to make findings of all those three categories to make the determination.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, Senator. All right, we'll go ahead and open up public hearing. Is the?
Sir? Staff, a question? Could I ask staff a question on that? I know as Hemet PD was saying, that even a type twenty or type twenty-one, they don't, they don't recommend it because it's so flooded area in the market, but even that, with the hundred feet and the Sunburst Mobile Homes being sixty-six feet, feet away, that would still be against even a type twenty, correct? Regardless, because it's sixty-six feet from the Mobile Home Park.
That is correct.
Even if we tried to make them go back to the drawing board, it would still be denied because it's too close to the Mobile Home Park.
That's one of the findings that you need to make, correct?
Okay, now open up public hearing. There's the applicant here, and would like to come up, please state your name and address for the record.
Mohammed Kafara, three twenty-eight North State Street, Hemet, California.
Oh, is there anything that you'd like to respond to in regards to the findings in the staff report?
Uh, yes. I feel like it's, the denial is based on businesses in the area that are being ran differently. We have other businesses, the El Toro Markets in the area, and those are family stores ran differently, they're cleaner, we don't have issues, we don't have many police calls. So in that area, before the development was, is, was completed, the area had a lot of transients, a lot of vandalism, a lot of graffiti. However, since we started the development, the development is done now over there. We haven't had any issues, we've increased, we have our own patrol company service that patrols that area, that deters transients, vandalisms, graffiti, and we haven't had that, I mean, very few issues if any, and they're handled with the patrol, they get, you know, they ask the people to leave, they haven't had any issues to where they've been violent to them, we haven't had any issues like that. So I mean, that center turned, turned around the time since we've done that development, increased security and the lighting, and as we're getting more and more tenants, it's increasing traffic there, which is deterring the transients and all these vandals even more, and we don't even see them just crossing through the area as much anymore. So it's completely different than.
Do you, do you own the, the, the center?
I, I also work for the people that own the center.
Gotcha, gotcha. And, and at what point, at what point did that development end, and you see that there's a drop in those calls and, and the, and the issues?
Well, since we started the development, since that development was started there.
Which is about when?
I believe about two years ago.
Two years ago?
About two, two and a half years ago it was started. Ever since the development was started, then there was patrol that was added to make sure nothing happens as it's being developed there, and that helped decrease the vandals over there. We've had, at first, we had a couple of issues, but once we increased lighting and we increased the patrol there and have our security there patrolling, it's been great, we haven't had very few issues there.
So I have a question, and you're probably not going to like it. You need the ABC license, would you be willing to open the store without alcohol?
It's, so the alcohol is just like tobacco, it's a convenience for, for the people, for customers, rather than going across, across the way or going to a parking lot or going to a business that has transients and has these issues, they can come to a business that provides that as service, however, it's not the focus of the business. So if, the El Toro Market is a full-line grocery store with a kitchen, however, this is a new concept that we're trying, we're also doing this concept in Marietta as well, where it does have alcohol, it has all the groceries, the dairy, the full line of groceries, it just does not have the meat and the produce and the kitchen area, so that for a more convenient shopping, so it's.
So the new one doesn't have that?
What is that?
The new one doesn't have those?
The new one is not going to have the meat and the kitchen and the produce, it's more groceries, dairy, paper plates, you know, house goods, health and beauty, so it's full-line grocery store minus the meat and the produce.
That was it. Do you have a question?
No, I don't have any questions at the moment. I don't have any questions at the moment.
And then also, I have a statement about the 66 feet from the sunburst. I think that 66 feet doesn't meet the requirement, however, the entrances of the mobile home park is on the other side, on Beavenshire, and there's no access from Latham. So I think that, I mean, that would probably be something that can be taken into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other public comment? Do we have anything online or ecomments?
We have no callers on the line, and I did not receive any ecomments.
Okay. Go ahead and close public hearing. All right. Thoughts, discussion?
Well, I know we had this debate on this issue with puff-time tobacco, about the whole sunburst mobile.
Right, that's not what's up, that's not what's up on this agenda, so we want to.
And so that's why he's referring to 66 feet, and we had that same conversation in that because of the footage issue. And, but as much as we would love to be open arms and welcome every business in here, we still have to be respectful of the rules and.
I think you're, want to say something?
Nothing that can, I, the land use is there. I just, unfortunately, there's too much with the ABC that conflicts with us being able to recommend what I want to recommend. It doesn't make sense. You know, it's, after hearing everything, we, I wish it wasn't based on the ABC licenses, is I guess what I'm trying to say, because I know everything else in that store would be convenience or serving a need. It's just, and I appreciate what that center has brought, but there's just too much of the, to support, it's, yeah, sorry. I don't, I'm just in talking circles, it's not going to make sense.
That's fine, that's fine. And that's, it's tough because we want to support development of business, and one comment is that those 1,400 calls were for the last three years, and so, you know, it's, obviously, there's an issue there. But I guess we'll entertain a motion if one would like to be given.
I can entertain a motion that the planning commission adopt, planning commission Resolution PC 2031, attachment number one, denying conditional use permit CPU 20-006 and public convenience for necessity determination PCN 21-001, based on the information and findings in the staff report.
All right. Motion passes 3-0. All right. Okay, item 6A, site development review, I just think that's supposed to be 6B, site development review 21-005 for Citrus Point. Good evening.
I'll be presenting site development review 21-005 for Citrus Point, 27 lots. Site development review 21-005, the applicant is Dr. Horton, the agent is Susan Paradiso. The location is northeast corner of Florida Avenue and Lake Street. The description is for the design and plotting with single-family homes of the remaining 27 lots within tract 31620-1, and the design and completion of the scenic highway setback on Lot 48. On July 7, 2020, SDR 20-004 was approved by the planning commission for the architectural review of 80 single-family residential lots in tracks 25168-1, 31620, and 31620-1. The project proposed three floor plans, two two-story and one single-story in the architectural styles of bungalow, traditional, and Tuscan. On December 15, 2020, a modification to SDR 20-004 was approved by the planning commission to include another single-family floor plan. Having two single-story floor plans would add variety and a more pleasing street scene on the north side of Orange Grove, which was slated for single-family homes only. This site development review is for the plotting and architectural review and approval of the 27 remaining lots in tract 31620-1, and also for the design and completion of the scenic highway setback on Lot 48. Here we can see the general plan is low-density residential. The zoning, I tried to capture the lots as best I could, is R1. The aerial view shows the location of the 27 lots, and this shows the plotting. So here we can see that up against the existing homes are single-family homes proposed to back those homes, and here as well. So the red and the black are single-family, and the purple and the green are two-story, I'm sorry, one-story, and then the purple and the green are two-story. Here's a breakdown of the number. One-story in the 1,800 square feet are nine. The two-story, the 2,239 square feet are seven. The two-story, 2,435 square feet are eight. And then of the one-story, 1,330 square feet are five, or a total of 27. The Plan 1 is 1,800 square feet, almost 1,900, and here are the different architectural styles, bungalow, traditional, and Tuscan. Plan 2, the 2,239 square foot, in the bungalow, traditional, and Tuscan. Plan 3, 2,035 square feet, bungalow, traditional, and Tuscan. And Plan 4, the 1,300 square feet, in bungalow, traditional, and Tuscan. And these are the color palettes for the bungalow style, the color combinations. These are the three that the traditional style will be offered in, and the three that the Tuscan will be offered in. This is a typical for a front yard. I only had a corner view, but it shows the parkway landscaping with a tree and ground cover and low shrubs. Dr. Horton does put a little turf in the front of the yards, and then the remaining with ground cover, mulch, low shrubs, and a tree. And typically, we get it in a legend stating the size and the type of plants. And there's a different combinations, they're not the same for every, every home. Fencing, Dr. Horton is proposing vinyl fencing between homes and in the rear of the property with vinyl gates. There is going to be a vinyl placed here because there is a wall from the adjacent property for the carports, and then this block wall that's going to continue all the way to Florida, which already has block wall. And here's that detail. These are the other properties that are within the 27 of the tract. This is just to show that they're getting vinyl, vinyl gates, vinyl on the sides and vinyl on the back of the property. Lots 26, 27, and 36 are up against this wall, which are the carports to the Lincoln Town Homes and the adjacent property. So Dr. Horton is proposing a vinyl fence, a six-foot vinyl fence across here, and then the planting of these trees along, along the back of the property to obstruct the view a little of that, of that wall. We do have a cross-section of Florida Avenue to show the right-of-way and the scenic highway. It's going to be two-lane with a median. This is considered the right-of-way. This will be landscaped. Of the 25-foot setback, there is going to be a six-foot meandering sidewalk, and then the remaining will be drought-tolerant landscaping, including ground cover, mulch, low shrubs, vines, and trees. And there will also be landscaping in the right-of-way. This is just a color view. It shows the landscaping in the scenic highway, the meandering sidewalk. It doesn't show the landscaping here, but this will also have landscaping. The scenic highway setback will also have the goose neck lighting every 100 feet, and that'll be along the meandering sidewalk. And then this is just a plant legend indicating the types of plant that will be in that scenic highway. To approve a site development review, there are findings. They are listed here, five, and they are further discussed in your staff report, and we could find that we can make those findings. For Hemet Municipal Code 90-48, a major site development review is required for site design and architecture of single-family residential projects, including five or more parcels. And Hemet Municipal Code 90-48 gives the planning commission authority to review and post conditions of approval which pertain to the development of the property and to approve or deny the site development review. Per Resolution 03.60 adopted in November of 2003 by Riverside County, an initial study and negative declaration was prepared pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act guidelines for the development. So this project is still under that determination. Property owners and tenants located within a 500-foot radius of the project were notified of the public hearing on May 7, 2021, in the press enterprise, and on May 6 with a mail 10-day hearing notice. As of the writing of this report, has, staff has not received correspondence neither for or against the project. The recommendation, recommended action is to adopt planning commission Resolution Number 2021 and approve site development review 21-005, subject to the conditions of approval. And this concludes my presentation. Be glad to answer any questions, and the applicant is also here to answer.
Thank you. Any questions for staff?
On the scenic setback, on the non-baitly drought-tolerant plants, who's upkeeping that? The city?
That is going to be dedicated to the city through LLMD, and so the city is the one who takes care of the maintenance of the scenic highway up to the right of, and the right-of-way.
The homes that are up against the existing homes, so on the west side of the 27 lots, do they also back up to the old wooden fences?
The proposed 27, yes, they are. There are some that are backing, and Dr. Horton is proposing to do the same and replace the vinyl.
That's a question, yeah, great. Well, considering that we have no comments for or against, Dr. Horton must have done a great job dealing with the first round, so we thank you that, thank you very much for that. If there's no further questions, we'll go ahead and open up public hearing. Would you like to come up and say anything?
We're good.
Well, I would just, once I can say thank you for dealing with the concerns of that community like you guys did the first time around. It obviously has paid benefits the second time around, so, thank you.
We're excited to do an ever extension of the local city, so thank you, guys.
And thank you for that scenic setback. That was also a big issue, so. All right, was there any other public comments or any comment online?
We do not have any callers on the line, and we did not receive any ecomments.
Okay, we'll close public hearing, and discussion not needed. All right. I'll go ahead and move that we adopt planning commission resolution and approve SDR 21-005, subject to the conditions of approval in Exhibit 1A, and plans Exhibit 1B, 1C, 1D, 1F, and 1G.
All right.
And the motion passes 3-0. Okay. Item 7, anything? I will look to item 8A for general plan progress report.
Good evening, Chairman Worth, members of the planning commission, and the community. I'll monitor you later. This is going to be a presentation for the 2012 through 2020 general plan progress report. Every city and county in California is required to have an adopted general plan to guide the long-term development of the community, required in accordance with the statutory requirements. The Hemet general plan contains 10 elements or chapters in the, in the general plan with the goal of providing policy guidance that maintains the community's vision for the future. Those elements include the land use, community design, circulation, community services and infrastructure, public safety, open space and conservation, recreation and trails, historic resources, art and culture, and housing element. A state law requires that cities submit an annual progress report on the general plan to the city council and to the governor's office of planning and research and the Housing and Community Development Department, HCD. The main purpose of providing this periodic review is to evaluate the city's progress and meeting its general plan vision to grant the city council an opportunity to adjust or modify its policies or approach to ensure that the city meets its stated goals. While the city has been submitting housing element progress reports annually to the Housing and Community Development Department, this is the second comprehensive review of the city's progress report in implementing the general plan since 2019, and this represents 2013 through the 2021 period, but for now, this report is up to 2020. The general plan progress report that was prepared is structured to represent the amendments to the general plan adopted by the city since the comprehensive update in 2012. The required and proposed amendments to the general plan that the city needs to prepare within the next year are recommended. It includes demographic and development, demographic and development changes that updates the community's profile. This information is prepared and gathered from the Census Bureau American Community Survey, as well as the Southern California Association of Governments, GAG. Survey, as well as the Southern California Association of Governments, GAG, a local profile for the city. It also includes general plan implementation programs that have been completed, are in progress, or are on a continuous or active basis. It also includes general plan implementation programs that have not been initiated but are recommended for initiation for the next few years. So we have quite a few accomplishments since the adoption of the 2012 general plan, to share those with you. We have completed, and these are the programs that we've completed, most recently, the One-Year Capital Improvement Program for 2020, general plan consistency update in 2019. We've updated our zoning code to provide consistency with the general plan. We've adopted the downtown Hemet-specific plan. Most recently, also, the Climate Action Plan was adopted. We approved the sign ordinance in the downtown in 2017, the approval of the West Hemet 1,000-acre annexation, number 14-001, the groundwater management plan, the master drainage plan update, which is still underway and in progress, improvements to improve and streamline development review process. We also have a rental rapid repair program. We also approved a general plan amendment that brings the airport land use plan into compliance. We adopted several ordinances through the Hemet Rocks Program in 2013. In 2014, the CDD approved the capital improvement program, so that may be coming back, five-year capital improvement program, so that may be coming back to you in the near term, zoning code updates, the fire department's five-year strategic plan, pardon me, the police department's five-year strategic plan, and then the fire department's standards of coverage and five-year State law also requires that each jurisdiction in California include a housing element in the general plan. It establishes specific actions, objectives, and timelines for meeting the state mandated Regional Housing Needs Assessment, RENA, for each income level. As illustrated here in this graphic, the RENA is provided to jurisdictions in eight-year cycles, and the current cycle that we are in now is Cycle 5, which covers the period of 2013 through 2021. And every year, a city prepares an annual housing element report that we submit to HCD, providing them with progress on our development. So this graphical illustration shows that our RENA for that period or for the fifth cycle period is 604. It's broken down into income categories based on affordability, starting from the very low to low to moderate and to above moderate income ranges. Of that, there was 604 total housing units required to be planned within that period. The city constructed 647 homes were built within this period up to the year 2020. It indicates remaining 281 that have unmet need based off of the income categories that were not fulfilled to date. However, in the upcoming cycle, we'll be seeing more policies in place to evaluate how to accommodate more affordable housing in the city.
What, I'm sorry, real quick, on that, so we're at the end of Cycle 5 for the RENA requirements. What happens if, since we didn't make it? Is there a consequence for that?
As long as we plan for it and it's identified it, most cities are unable and have been unable to meet the RENA goals for the city. The governor has declared a housing crisis in the city of California due to the underproduction of housing throughout the state. It is, as long as we plan for that housing, and that we're trying to accommodate that and providing our reporting and tracking, we'll be in compliance.
Gotcha, thank you.
I also wanted to point out, in the next, by this, at the end of this year, 2021, on the horizon, we have three general plan amendments that need to be prepared for consideration by the City Council pursuant to state law, and we're actively working with a consultant to prepare these updates, which, the adoption, it would be October of 2021, so the Planning Commission will be bringing this back, these three elements, the addition of the environmental justice element, the public safety element update, and the housing element update for the sixth cycle. Additionally, it is recommended that the programs for this near term be carried forward from the 2019 City Council approval, and until such time as funding permits, this would be, we would actively engage in Economic Development Strategic Marketing Plan, should the Planning Commission approve these recommendations, include a sustainable tourism element program, a business outreach and retention program, a marketing plan, citywide design and landscape design guidelines, update of development impact fees, and review of Quimby fees on an annual basis. And these are the recommended general plan programs to pursue for the upcoming year. This concludes my presentation. It is recommended that the Planning Commission provide recommendations and direct staff to finalize the 2012 to 2020 General Plan Progress Report to present to the City Council.
Can you go back to the last slide? Thank you. Is there any questions or comments from the Commission?
I think that that's a great step in the right direction. My question is, is have you been doing any of that previously, and if not, how are you going to implement some of these things that you want to work on?
Actually, we have been working on some of these components in various forms. We do have the business outreach program started, which haven't completed the documentation yet. The citywide design and landscape guidelines has been drafted, which is still under review for that. So we are making headway, but due to the limited staffing and time with all the influx of projects that came in through 2020, which was not really anticipated but very well-welcome, we have been delayed on some of these city-initiated projects. But we will, going forward, we will make sure that these items get on the docket and get completed and implemented.
I have a couple of questions. I mean, just a couple of meetings to try to wrap our heads around this all. In the part of the reading, it said that the state allows a general plan to be amended four times, and if I'm reading this right, I notice that there is a lot of general plans that have been amended more than four times during that timeframe. Is there any, just kind of like a question Chairman Worth had, is there any penalties for doing it more than four times? And could it look like we did at least 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 from one gathering? But am I reading that wrong?
So you are correct, and we could only do four general plan amendments in a year. However, there may be a general plan that was combined into one, so there may be two general plan applications that may be combined into one in order to make one action, so that counts as one general plan update. So even though there may be two or three different applications, if they're relatively close enough, then you can adopt them as one action, and that will count as one general plan update.
Because we're allowed to do four per year, then?
Four changes per year, yes.
Okay. And the other question I have is, a couple of things, just reading it over, on their community designs, there was a lot of questions and references, community designs that we have. I don't know if you bring the drawing board when you submit it to the state, what you spend and what you do in community designs, but I have a couple of questions about, like, the downtown infill development and the sidewalk shade and shelter. There's different things I necessarily don't see happening in downtown, but it's labeled as things that are being done. So what are we doing in the community, the community design? What are some projects we're doing for that?
Well, there's a lot of different things that are happening under the SB 2 grant currently, and we have transit-oriented development that's being planned. We have multifamily, low-income housing that's being planned. So there are a lot of things happening under the paper at this point, and once they're ready, they'll be presented to the Planning Commission, this body, for your review and approval and/or recommendation to City Council. But when we're talking about community design, we're talking about the area of which that makes downtown a little more walkable, a little more inviting for businesses that can locate within downtown, because right now we have a huge influx on the west end and along major corridors like Stetson, Sanderson, Florida, but not much in downtown. So when we adopt, say, a downtown-specific plan and we try to change those community design aspects, what we're trying to do is invite and encourage some of the developers and builders to come to downtown and make those changes. Currently, we have actually a number of different projects that are being processed in downtown. Right now, we have some that have been, seven different restaurants, I believe, that are under review currently. Most of them will be more on the director review level because there are smaller changes with the existing buildings, but some of the larger ones will be coming before you. And there are some other changes that are coming in downtown that encourages both the commercial as well as residential developments in downtown.
That's what I was going to ask, pardon me. When you re-go through, does that include zoning?
Not necessarily zoning itself, but changing the requirements within the downtown-specific plan. So for instance, right now, there's a section in the downtown-specific plan that only allows for a certain commercial under or adjacent to Florida Avenue, but that doesn't give a lot of opportunity for some of the properties, say, that are along Acacia or Santa Fe or some of the larger streets. So we're making those changes to giving additional opportunity for those who want to provide that type of business within the area, then they have that opportunity instead of limiting it to very specific and very narrow areas of downtown.
The restaurants you're mentioning in downtown, those are foreseen, they're coming. The question is, is that the, is it the city that is, because I know the property owner is ready to move forward, and some of them, but I know building has his way of back-and-forth, delays time, so, going with that question. I just know that he wants, he wants to move forward, and I know that there is some installments, you know, stalling a little bit. But the other question I have in that is the MetroLink in West Hemet, it mentioned 2018 paperwork. What is status on the MetroLink?
Well, that's something that we're working through with the county and the MetroLink to bring rail system into the city, specifically into downtown, and that's one of the areas that we're focusing on, the transit-oriented development, so that once we have those type of developments of housing, then the current plan is to provide the busing system first, to bring a busing system into downtown, a hub or station, and then eventually bring the rail system as well. But in order to do that, you have to have ridership, and ridership is dependent on the residential development. So what we're trying to do is provide opportunities, policies, requirements, standards to, for developers to be able to develop a transit-oriented development in downtown area, and that's one of the focus that we're working on under the SB 2 grant funding right now.
So when we're saying things to the state, once the report is done, some of this stuff is projected, not necessarily done, but is-
Correct.
-projected in the state.
Correct.
It's also stated that you want us to make observations and recommendations. Does that mean, like, on these things, or?
Mm-hmm.
So I, of course, want to throw out the Chamber of Commerce to support your, and I do mean that in all sincerity, because there's possibilities to create committees to support a drive. I know that when there's a big agenda and not a lot of people to do it, you know, support is something that you need, and that is something that the Chamber can do, so I do want you to remember that the Chamber of Commerce is here to serve, to assist for those things. I know that your council works very hard to reach out to businesses, and so I appreciate those efforts as well. I just, this is new, this part is new for me, a lot of this is new for me, but I want to make sure that I'm not passing over what I'm supposed to do, because, you know, I want to get my hands dirty, HP.
We appreciate that.
Yeah, thank you. Just don't forget the Chamber, because we can support you with whatever you're trying to accomplish, and you're not alone, because I know that that gets overwhelming.
Thank you.
Or easier definition for RHNA?
I'm sorry?
For RHNA, the Regional Housing Need Assessment, because that one really just put a lot of confusion on me when I was trying to understand the numbers and foreseen and what is done and the projection, it just kind of was a little bit of confusing to me to understand.
So RENA is done every eight years to identify how much housing is needed within the area. In this sixth cycle, the county of Riverside, or each of the counties gets together and divides up the number of homes that are necessary in support for future growth of the next eight years. Each city is required to provide their share. The sixth cycle, the city of Hemet received 6,000, correctly from those money, 6,566?
1,466.
466, sorry. So that's how many homes that we're supposed to be able to anticipate growth within the next eight years, and that number is divided up into very low, low, moderate, and upper-end housing, and they're divided based on percentage and the population. Generally, as Monica's mentioned in the past in our presentation, the majority of the cities cannot meet those numbers, because it's not city-driven development, it's a developer-driven system. So a city can provide the opportunity, change the zoning, allocate some areas for future growth, make the standards easier.
And the HP, can they do that?
We can, we can do those, and we can make those changes, but it really depends on the development community that wants to invest in this city or any other city to build those homes. Right now, we have a lot of moderate and upper-end homes that are coming in, more of the track lines that you see from D.R. Horton, KB Homes Richmond, Benar, and those kind of folks, and there are some private companies that are building homes, but they're not necessarily building low-income homes. So all we have to do in meeting the RENA numbers is to provide the opportunity, because we are not the builders for the city, we provide the opportunities. So that's what we're required to do, is to make sure that we have adequate spacing, adequate land area, adequate zoning that can support those numbers to evolve in the next eight years.
When we had our workshop the other couple weeks ago on it as well, we discussed different ideas, and we've cut it down to different options, and so when you brought up, and I know in downtown Hemet, they wanted it as well years ago, and it was kind of turned down, but you brought up as well a multi-use building where apartments are above and stores below, and is there a certain permit that we, or a certain ordinance that we have to create for somebody to have a residential and commercial in one unit? And if so, what does it take to get something like that in- And if so, what does it take to get something like that in a motion so that we can welcome developers to do that?
Sure, and we already have a zone called mixed use. So that's a zoning that allows for a combination of commercial and residential development. And again, the opportunity is out there. We're trying to fine-tune it so that it's easier or it's more attractive to the builders. But the ultimate decision is made by the developers and investors who wants to do that in this area, whether it's downtown or whether it's in other parts of the city. But it's really driven by the developers who wants to invest that. And based on the market, they see if they could make black lines versus red lines, then they will proceed forward. But if the market doesn't give that afford or opportunity to make profit, the majority of those builders are going to either wait or they're going to build on the products that are selling now, which is mostly detached, single-family residential homes. So that's why we have influx and a lot of single-family detached home construction companies that are building in the city of Hemet. We are working with a couple of different builders. And again, that's part of the SB2 grant funding. And so this grant funding really gives that opportunity for multiple aspects within the downtown area or near the downtown area that allows for those type of developments to occur.
That's all my questions. Thank you.
It's pretty clear COVID had a big impact on progress from the last update. But I do want to point something out that just, that we see as we drive around. The element program number circulation CP12, bikeway funding. We've got some funds, and we see the benefit in terms of circulation. One thing I noticed is a lot of our proposed implementation programs are all as funding permits. Everything's as funding permits. But at least what this does is gives us kind of a sense of prioritization for resources and staff resources. So I would, some feedback that maybe we can consider is maybe we add something else up there that's maybe more focused on one of the, something I keep hearing a lot about, and that's one of our optional elements, the recreation and trails. There's, if funding becomes available, if there's, maybe there's something we can do in that regard for the community to promote that healthy lifestyle. So if there's a possibility of maybe adding a recommended program, of course, pending funding, of course, but that would at least put it up on the radar that's something more for existing residents in the city and improving quality of life, you know, versus, which a lot of these things obviously do. But just my thoughts, recommendation, if that's possible, that maybe we could add one more bullet up there on recreation and trails.
Thank you.
Anything else? Well, thank you very much. That was very informative. And it was kind of a long read this afternoon, but it was worth it.
Good job. Congratulations.
Thank you. Okay. Moving on, department reports, city attorney reports.
Thank you, Chairman Worth. I have nothing to report this meeting, but moving forward, I will try to find legal updates to provide to you guys, see what's left over to.
Great. Thank you. And I think also, one of the things that was provided when I first came on the commission that maybe would be worthwhile is just kind of a little bit of some training in regards to what the commission role is and the legal aspect of it. I know we've done some, but any time that there's a light agenda, maybe we could add some of that for our own edification.
What do we know about, I'll keep that in mind.
Chairman Worth, so you are recommending that it is okay for staff to take this finalized report to the council? I know we didn't take a vote, but-
I forgot. Thank you. I apologize. All right, so I am, I moved, I am recommending, is this a motion or is this a just a recommendation?
Well, it's not a motion, but it's making a recommendation to staff to allow to go forward to-
Thank you. Thank you. So yes, on behalf of the planning commission, and I'll take note of this concurrence, the planning commission, that staff does take this general plan progress report with consideration for some of the comments and direct this to finalize the report for presentation to the city council.
Thank you.
Got ahead of myself on the agenda. And I don't mind being, George Kane, can you develop the reports?
Sure, and I just wanted to say, Monique has done this report a very short period of time, and a lot of different aspects that have come together. So I just want to thank her for her effort in this process, as well as some of that, because Gabby was out ill for two weeks. She had to both take care of the front counter as well as doing the staff reports to get everything done. So I really wanted to say thanks for doing a great job on making this happen because there's a lot of things that has to go through in order for this agenda to come to a finalized format in a very short period of time, so.
Thank you guys so much.
Other than that, I just wanted to give you guys an update that on May 11th, a second reading for the food truck vendor ordinance as well as the sidewalk vendor ordinance was approved. And the second reading for the cannabis ordinance was approved on that same day. So they both become effective on June 11th, 30 days after that.
All right, and still to you, future items.
Okay, so we have a couple of different items coming for you. Oak Ridge, McSweeney, so this is another single-family residential development, market rate. We have Duncan Dunn is coming on Sanderson, so look for that. I've always looked for Duncan Dunn, I just never could find one around here. And western zoning consistency. This is the item that we discussed that we were waiting for a lack review. So look for that coming forward. And then there's a couple of other items that are more exciting and more development-oriented, so that'll be coming for you. So we may not have a light agenda for a while. It's going to get pretty packed and full.
Okay, well, that's good. All right. And finally, I think commissioner reports.
Great. Commissioner Lompe?
Nothing to report.
Mr. Beanstriffer?
Nothing to report.
And Chairman Worth?
I just, I would, just to echo what you said, I'm starting to learn a little bit more of what's involved with getting all this stuff in here. So kudos to our staff for sure. And besides that, nothing to report.
Thank you.
And so if there's nothing more, then we'll be adjourned until June 1st, 21 at 6:00 p.m.